All right, good afternoon. Everyone hear us okay out there? Welcome back to our new City Hall building. Thank you for participating in your meeting. We've got some city business to tend to here today, a few updates, discussion, and a very short non-consent. So we would never say we're going to get you out of here earlier on time because then it'll go long, but we will hope. So thank you for participating, those of you who've come to speak. We greatly appreciate that engagement. We are going to go ahead and formally open this session, call ourselves to order. We're going to ask Mr. Greg Corona to come forward and give the invocation. If everyone would please stand for this and the pledge.
Hey, let's pray together. Holy God, we come to you today, Father, asking for your blessing, asking for your hand just to be over this meeting. Father, to be over our city. And Lord, I pray for, Lord, this council, for our mayor. And God, I lift them up to you, asking you just to give them wisdom, to give them discernment as they lead. Father, be with our city workers and our city leaders and the things that they do, things that those of us, Lord, that are out there that we'll never fully know or understand. But God, I pray for unity for our city. I pray for peace. God, I pray that in all things, Lord, you would work for the benefit of our people. Lord, thank you for Jesus. Thank you for salvation that comes through Him. We pray these things in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. If you guys will join me in the pledges. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And the Texas flag as well. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Thank you, guys. Please be seated. All right, Ms. City Secretary, we will move into number five if you have any announcements.
Mayor, no announcements today.
All right, would ask you to talk us in or lead us into public comment, please.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for participating in today's City Council meeting. Your input and your opinions are important to us, and we're glad that you're here to share them. At each posted meeting, we invite our fellow community members to address City Council regarding posted agenda items or topics related to city policy. Every speaker today will have three minutes to address the council. At the end of two and a half minutes, excuse me, let me not read that, we ask that you stay within your three minutes allotted. We are working through a time clock right now. We're going to use the same one we used last meeting. There is no beeping on this, but we will have that time clock up on the screen, and so it will change colors at 30 seconds to let you know that you should wrap up your thoughts and please stay within your three minutes. We do have a public hearing today, so if you're here to speak on that public hearing, we'd ask that you either speak during public comment or during the public hearing, but not both in order to help us keep accurate minutes, and it's your choice at which time you'd like to speak. When you come to the microphone today, please state your name and whether or not you live in the Amarillo City Limits, and then you may begin addressing council. Please note that if you're speaking on an item not on today's agenda, the Texas Open Meetings Act limits how elected officials may respond. They may, council may respond with statements of fact, ask that the topic be added to a future agenda, or they may refer the matter to the city manager who can have staff step out and visit with you. Again, we're thankful that you're all here today. Our first public comment is Chris Pittman, so we would invite Chris up. And on deck after Chris will be Timothy Ingles.
Ms. City Secretary, do we have the clock going, and do you have the ability to notice when the three minutes is up?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you, guys. Go right ahead, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Chris Pittman, and yes, I am a resident of Amarillo. I live in the Estacado neighborhood. To start off, thank you all for your ongoing efforts in pursuing the Safe Streets for All initiatives. The public outreach regarding this has been phenomenal, and the, those involved have been exceptionally kind and friendly. The Safe Streets for All effort addresses the issue that many of our streets and intersections are inherently unsafe due to their design. This is not merely a result of unfortunate circumstances, it reflects a systemic issue that demands our media attention. We know how to make our streets safer, and we will see some great examples of how to do so later today. I encourage the adoption and continued exploration of these and future Safe Street for All projects. I want to highlight there are few, excuse me, I want to highlight that there are affordable and incremental steps that we can take to ensure safe, street safety, thus allowing for a greater number of Safe Street for All projects, and I encourage the city to explore these options as we move forward. Our city's own Safe Street for All projects complement and support the Texas Transportation's goal of Road to Zero, which aims to reduce the number of deaths on Texas roadways by half by the year 2035 and zero by 2050, and doing so by prioritizing safety and street design. I invite the city to consider using the Road to Zero goal as the number one guiding principle in all of our infrastructure decisions, regardless if the project is net new, a repair, or regular maintenance. We should take the opportunity to determine how the road can become safer for all users. This means prioritizing safety over factors such as cost, traffic volume, and traffic speed. As reviewed today's traffic-related presentations, I urge you to ask, is this proposed initiative prioritizing safety, cost, volume, or speed? We must do our part to support the goal of achieving zero deaths on our roadways through the implementations of the Safe Streets for All initiatives. By aligning our policies and practices with this ambitious goal, we can create a safer environment for all road users, no matter how we choose to travel, by foot, bike, or car. To better communicate our safety-first approach, I propose that the city adopt existing Texas policy, which was enacted by the legislature last session, and shift our language away from the term "accident" when referring to car collisions. This term is misleading. While human error may play a role, the design of our streets often leads to preventable collisions, highlighting deeper systemic issues, especially in areas with frequent incidents. By reframing our language, we can foster a culture that recognizes the need for proactive measures to enhance safety and reduce the frequency of these collisions. In conclusion, I urge the council to take bold steps toward prioritizing safety in our infrastructures, infrastructure decisions, and to embrace the language that reflects our commitment to preventing collisions. Together, we can work towards a future where our streets are safe for everyone, whether on foot, bike, or vehicle. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Pittman.
Next is Timothy Ingles, and after Timothy will be Laura Abernathy.
Hello, council. Good to see y'all here today. I wanted to comment on two different items. First is the Safe Streets for All project. I was on the steering committee for that, and I'm in huge support of it. I think basically all the different designs and recommendations that they've put forth are trailblazing and very important for safe streets. And I'd also like to mention that safe streets also make thriving places that have more economic activity, and that can help drive and improve the bottom line of Amarillo. That's something I've mentioned to, let's see, past two councils, that the city really needs to do the math. We need to look at acre by acre. What is the return on investment we're getting for, you know, a half-acre, single-family home versus a row of townhomes, things like that, multi-story development? And we'll find that generally you make a lot more money, and we can cover our basic services much better if we have more than just sprawling, single-family development. That brings me into the second point. I see that you have on here the possibility of tearing down the warehouse at 500 South Grant Street for additional parking. Parking lots, especially any city-owned, you know, land parcel does not generate any taxable revenue, and right now downtown still has a good mix of historic buildings. But the more that we tear those down for short-term needs, like maybe there's a parking need in this area, we destroy the fabric that makes this place special. So I would highly recommend that we look for other options that we can do to meet the parking needs. Most other cities would choose to build a parking garage, and I think that's more expensive, but I think it's a better use of the infrastructure. I mean, similarly, honestly, with the Civic Center, you want to put the Civic Center, you want to renovate the Civic Center in a place that has a grid system, that has a lot of dense buildings around, but then you need C and C acres and acres of parking for that. So really, if you need a lot of cars in a place, you should put that somewhere outside of downtown or build parking garages for that. That's the best use of city land, and especially of the history that this place has. Nowhere else downtown has that, so I strongly encourage you not to demolish 501 South Grant Street. It's a bad return to the city, and it's bad for the history of the city. And I'm very interested in working with you all on other options apart from tearing down areas in our little brick town in Amarillo. This should be our mini-brick town, just like OKC. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. As a statement of fact, the existing warehouse space that we're currently using not being discussed to be torn down, to be converted to possible parking, so it would be parking garage style. And then, need to know, Mr. Freeman, is that the correct address?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we'll have much more on that here later, so if you guys will kind of hold on those comments, just so we're not leading anybody down a path where they may grab hold of one comment or just hear one part of the update. So if everyone will please stay tuned in until we can go through the full presentation. Yes, ma'am, please come forward.
Our last speaker is Laura Abernathy.
Good afternoon. I'm Laura Abernathy, and I am a city member.
Thank you. Yeah, if you've got it.
Short people-friendly.
Perfect.
I am here today on behalf of the residents of 77th Street that are south of the Greenways Playa Lake to request your support in addressing a critical need for flood mitigation in our community. As you know, devastating loss of property and homes occurred June 1st, 2023, with some residents still displaced today. Their homes are still not livable. The area, sorry, as you know, the area continues to be a high risk for flooding as the playa is currently sitting at 100% capacity. Even a small amount of precipitation could become more detrimental than prior rain events have in the past. Due to continued development and a blind eye by city officials, loss of life is now a very real concern for these families should another event occur in the middle of the night, as it did before. I come with two requests on behalf of the residents. The first request is please begin pumping the Greenways Playa now, proactively, and monitor the levels to ensure safe conditions for the residents in the area. And two, the Regional Flood Planning Group is currently identifying areas to be included in the state flood plan, which offers state funding for eligible flood mitigation projects. The area south of the Greenways Lake not only meets all eligibility requirements, but also has a proven need for immediate attention. However, to have this area considered for state-funded flood mitigation project, we need a political subdivision such as the City of Amarillo as a sponsor for our proposal. Your sponsorship of this flood mitigation initiative could be instrumental in preventing further loss and providing safe living conditions for the families affected by ongoing flood risks caused by the Greenways Playa Lake. I have sent a prior email before. It kind of got sent through the chain of command and really wasn't addressed. That was on 11/4 of 2024. So I'm reaching out in, as the City Council means, but again, your sponsorship can bring much-needed relief and protect both property and lives. So we're asking for sponsorship for a flood mitigation project. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. If I could, I'm going to direct you, if you, if you have any time to get with staff, they could give you a current update on what the plan is for that playa, the drainage improvements that'll be made, in order to pump that on a force main so that it doesn't, it's not contingent upon it being daisy-chained to McDonald Lake. And then what I could also do for you, Mrs. Abernathy, because I know you and I have gone back and forth on emails several times, we could put it on for an update for all of our public to hear as an update or a discussion item next council meeting, so that we could get a full update on all of the pumps that have been installed, the additional land that's been purchased, the increased volume in all of our playa lakes, and then this, these force mains that are going to greatly improve our capacity so that we're not at the risk or underneath that issue of not being able to pump them while they're raining from one to the next. So if staff would put that on for the next council meeting, and we'll also give you that update directly. So anyone that you'd like to speak with after maybe one of these gentlemen over here. Anyone else that would like to offer public comment here today, please raise your hand. Mr. Fisher, I saw your name first, if you come forward, or saw your hand.
My name is Mike Fisher. I live in the city limits of Amarillo. I still don't have my EDC data, and I'm going to keep saying it forever, so I'll just keep saying it, and the next council will be like, what is he talking about? I have some, some things I'm still interested in. Did McWilliams, our city attorney, approve the letter that the former police chief wrote supporting the Underwood guy? Did McWilliams write the response from the city regarding that letter? If so, I ask again, why is McWilliams still here? And those guys are, all these decisions that are made, and I guarantee you, by the former police chief, was that the blessing of the city's attorney's office? Everything goes through them. When is somebody's head going to roll from the city attorney's office? So I'm going to begin this with another, I call them a governmentisms, like I did last time. You know, when that, when somebody's asking for funding, the experiment has already began. And Item 7C on the agenda today, you're talking about street safety, and I've talked about this before, I really believe that this was all like created, like I think the safety issue in our city streets have been, was created. And if you think back, when we lost the red light camera money, that's when all the accidents started happening. Jog your memory. And then they put in the centrally-controlled systems, and then all these accidents started happening. And then you're wondering, wow, did we lose our mind during COVID? No, we didn't. These lights are messed up, and it's on purpose. So when you hear a narrative, as Mr. Freeman talks about today, when they're explaining away how Fisher is crazy, I'm going to just give you the facts, but I have to paint a narrative because when I ask for data, I don't get it. So I sit at a stoplight, and I record it with a camera, and I sent it to you guys. You guys have an email, or you will be getting an email, that has the video and the proof. And so the safety, do you remember before the red light cameras went away, we had like a two-second delay at almost every intersection, and they call it a clearance interval? So it stays red, all lights stay red for one and a half, two and a half seconds to make sure everybody's cleared out, and all the last-minute people that made that bad decision at the last second to go for it, have time to get through there without an accident. So that clearance interval at every intersection I've looked at is one second. So if you look at the difference between like Colter and Sanci, so the Death Race 5,000 on Sanci, why is there deaths on that street? If you look at the width of the street, it takes us over, it's 100 and, I'm trying to find it here where my data is, it's 60% more clearance, so it's 120 feet from where you stop to clear all the traffic that's opposing you. Where on Colter, it's only 75 feet, but they all still get only that one-second delay. That's why we're getting accidents. That's why people are dying. That's why we have statistics that don't match the rest of the country. And I know my time's up. I really want, I'd like to be able to rebut these guys when they, when they talk, and feel free to ask me to come up and present some more data, because you're going to get a narrative today, and it's going to be against whatever I said, because it's all about the money. We're applying for grants for safety. All this safety crap started before they asked for this, this money so they could have a reason to ask for it. Thank you.
Appreciate you, Mr. Fisher. Do I have anyone else here today who'd like to offer a public comment? Okay, seeing no one else, we will go ahead and close Section 6. We will move into our discussion items. Councilman Kraft, I know you had something you wanted to offer. If I can kick it over to you on this 7A.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I spoke with Councilmember Sherlin a couple days ago. He just wanted me to pass along. He appreciates everyone in the community for their prayers and supports. He is still working. He is taking phone calls, so if you need anything, get with him, because he's at home. So we just really care about Tom, and he just wanted me to pass along that he thanks every single one of you in the community, and he's still working hard for you guys.
Yeah, we appreciate that update. We appreciate Councilman Sherlin for all of his time and energy, even though he is working from home, and we expect him back two weeks from now, next council meeting, but once again, not at this one. So do I have any other items from council you guys need to review or anything else you'd like to discuss before we go to 7B? Okay, on to Item 7B. Chief Johnson, if you'll come forward on that one and walk us into that one.
I appreciate y'all having me here today to talk about our year-end crime data. This first slide here is just our authorized strength. This is not our total strength. This is just what we're authorized to have right now. 378 police officers, 78 full-time professional staff, and nine part-time professional staff positions. That just gives you an idea of what our full strength would be if we had it. I wanted, I do want to take just a minute here, if you'll indulge me, and introduce you to some of our professional staff that I've brought today. We have Elizabeth Hinojosa. Will you stand up, please? She's, she's our office manager. We have Lynette Alamo. She's one of our crime scene technicians. Well, Lisa Gibson and Jenny Flores from our records division. Well, Lisa is our commander over the records division. Jenny is one of our IBR specialists, and James Graham is our manager over the property division. The reason I want to introduce you to them is there, we have a lot of support from the community in Amarillo, the police officers do. There's not a day goes by that I'm out eating lunch, somebody doesn't come up and thank me for what I do. But I'll tell you right now, these folks don't ever get thanked, and even from people inside our own department don't recognize the, the critical need for our full-time professional staff and our part-time professional staff. And I would have been remiss not to mention them. They are just as critical to our operation, to our success, as the, the man and woman out there in the patrol car. So I wanted to make sure that they, they were recognized. I've also brought my, my command staff and several lieutenants and sergeants that are subject matter experts, in case any questions come up that I'm not able to answer. Hopefully, we can have a question for you, but I certainly wanted to introduce our professional staff. This is our current staffing for police officers, only 336 officers. I want to point out, two of those are rehires. It says one went through our academy. That was, that was an officer that worked for another agency, Potter County, that we trained in our academy. He went back to Potter County, worked there for a little while, decided he wanted to come work for us. That is not something we intended to do. We don't intend to pull people away from other agencies, but he made that decision to come back and work for us. So two rehires, and one of those went through our academy. I believe we're fixing to hire a third rehire, if I'm not mistaken. Out of those 336, seven of those officers are currently in field training. They're not out there on their own. They're being trained by, by the training officers. They have graduated the academy. We have 10 recruits in the academy, plus we have an additional Potter County employee that, that is going through our academy to get his certification, and they're set for a July graduation. We have 32 officer positions open. That has gone down some in the last several months. It may be too early to attribute it to the raise that you guys approved, that the citizens approved, but we have had two complete application processes since the raise went into effect, and the numbers of applicants have almost doubled on both of those. So that's, that's a promising sign that that is effectiveness, and we hope to see more of that as we move forward. So I want to get into some of the crime numbers. This is our Part 1 index crime. This is homicide, rape, robbery, aggravated assault, and our violent crime totals, and then burglary, theft, stolen vehicles, arson, and then our property crime totals. The first column is how many we had in 2024. The second column is for 2023 for a comparison. Then the percentage change, and then the actual number change. As you can see, the violent crime total from 23 to 24 went down 5.3%. The property crime total went down 14.2% for an overall reduction in Part 1 crimes of 12.5%. I'll let y'all look at that for just a minute.
Chief, real quick, while you're giving us a minute, would you contribute some of the theft and some of those other ones, like stolen vehicles, the reduction on that? Is that technology that's advancing that? I mean, we have license plate readers, or are we, are we locating those vehicles quicker?
We, on the stolen vehicles specifically, I had them run that number. We, we have recovered, we recovered 164 stolen autos in 2024 that are directly from LPR hits, from the license plate reader hits. 164 way-away eclipses anything we ever did before the LPR. So yes, we, we can definitively say that the technology we have, we have been rolling out over the last several years has had a positive impact on this. That's just one example.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions about that? Hey, Steph, this, I don't think this is working. All right, so here's our index crimes. This is over a 25-year total. This is the last 25 years. You can see that it's been steadily going down in Amarillo. That, that also matches the national averages. Crime has been going down across the nation the last 25 to 30 years. Now, you will notice there are some spike, some spikes in there during certain years, but the overall crime over that time period is coming down. Your yellow line there is the total number of crimes. Your green line is your property crimes, and your red line is your violent crimes. Violent crimes has stayed pretty consistent over the last 25 years. I don't know why this isn't working.
Can I ask one question about that last page, too? So that's just raw numbers, correct?
Yeah, that's the number of, that's the number of crimes.
So really, if you were to look at per capita, I mean, the amount of crime per person or per individual or per capita, you probably, I mean, because the population is, I mean, if you're, if you're looking from 1999 to 2024, I don't know what the 1999 population was, but we've seen an increase in population, so more people living here, but that crime is decreasing. So I guess the per capita rate would probably even look more dramatic than this chart would if you were just looking at that.
That's correct. Can you speak to that?
That's okay.
Can we, can we run per capita numbers? We can get those if you, if you want to look at it.
Yeah, I'd just like to look at that, because I mean, it's kind of Yeah, I'd just like to look at that because I mean, it's kind of interesting. It's good the crime is going, but I would bet if you add the per capita to it, you see even with the population increase, we're still seeing a pretty significant drop in crime.
Since these are raw numbers, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And Haley, I apologize, I didn't introduce you earlier. This is Haley Hernandez, one of our crime analysts. So I don't want her mad at me, so I needed to introduce her.
It looks like we're around 171,000 population back in 99.
So that's an interesting point. Next slide, Steph. This is our 10-year violent crimes and again, you can see in 2020, we had a spike in violent crimes. That also occurred in, across the nation that year, but it's been coming down steadily since then. Those are your homicides, rapes, robberies and aggravated assaults. If y'all want me to pause on some of them, just let me know. This is some of the historical data on our murder cases in Amarillo in the last 25 years. The black line is total number of murders. The green line is those that are solved and the red line is unsolved murders. We have been pretty, pretty, way above the national average on homicides solved. Is that a fair statement, Jim? I brought Jim Clements, our commander of the homicide unit. This is just a graph showing the difference between Potter and Randall County when it comes to homicides. There's a pretty drastic difference in the number of homicides in Potter County versus Randall County and there's a variety of reasons that that could be. And then this is the manner of death in all the total homicides. You can see that 73% were gunshots and then some of the others there. I was asked to talk a little bit about hotspots. I think Mr. Simpson, you had asked about that at one time. This is a map that I had Haley put together for me. This is a hotspot just for homicides and violent crimes in 2024. The red area is the actual hotspot. The blue, individual blue dots are specific instances. So what the system does is it takes the total number of an area and then it puts the heat map around that as a size indicator about how many incidents we've had in those areas. If you look real close, there's a shaded area there towards the top. That is our PSN zone, that is our Project Safe Neighborhood Zone that we're working in partnership with the U.S. Attorney's Office on. You can see that that is still our most prominent area for crime, at least aggravated assaults and homicides. Go ahead, next one. When we talk about hotspots and we talk about proactive enforcement, and Mr. Kraft, you'll know this from working in the fire industry, they talk about the fire triangle. That means you have to have oxygen, fuel and heat and you take one of those out of the equation, you won't have a fire. That's how they, that's how they work their fire scenes. We also have a crime triangle and that consists of the offender, the suspect, the location and the target or victim. You take one of those away and you don't have a crime committed. And so when we talk about proactive enforcement, that's what we're doing is we're addressing all three of those legs of that triangle. If we can, if we can reduce the number of each leg, we can reduce overall crime much better than if we're just targeting one specific leg of that. So your first line of proactive enforcement is going to be your patrol officer. That's the guy out there working the field, answering the calls. Because of the way the organization has to be set up, the patrol officer is only going to have a certain amount of time to be proactive because he's going to be responding to calls for service. So in between there is when he's going to be proactive, enforcing traffic violations, beat checking businesses, seeing if everything's locked up, looking for suspicious people. So they're predominantly answering calls and calls for service as they come in. When you get into our specialized units, those are the units that are tasked primarily with proactive enforcement and that's going to be our motor squad, our PACE SWAT narcotics unit, the NPO unit, Neighborhood Policing Unit, PIO, Public Information Office, Crime Prevention, Intelligence and Analysis, Student Crime Stoppers and CID, Criminal Investigation Division, that's our detective division. And that's only, I don't think I have all of them listed there, but those are the ones that came to my mind of specific instances I can give you of proactive enforcement. Motors is the one that's going to handle the traffic enforcement. They take the data that we collect, that we're given, and that's how they allocate their resources or where they need to be. One of the most common ones is people ask us to work enforcement at schools. The problem is, there's over 60 schools in Amarillo and I've got roughly 11, eight motors officers, I don't even imagine I've thought. We've got eight motors officers, so obviously, we can't cover all 60 every single day. So they have to allocate their resources in the most wise way that they can. PACE SWAT Narcotics, they target specific individuals, specifically violent crime individuals. Any city will have a small segment of your population is going to be responsible for a large portion of your crime. So that, those are the types of individuals we want to focus on. The Neighborhood Policing Unit, that's our primary community engagement unit. Them along with PIO and Crime Prevention, they will go out and give programs on safety in the home, safety in a business. They'll give business assessments to try to give people tips on how to make their business more secure. What we're trying to accomplish with that is the location leg of the crime triangle to address the location leg. They're also the ones that go out and talk about personal safety and teaching people how they can personally take responsibility for their own safety, some of the CRAZE training. CRAZE is the civilian response to active shooter events. That's the leg, that's the target and the victim trying to help them. Our Intelligence and Analysis Unit does the same stuff by gathering the data. Student Crime Stoppers works programs like our underage buying programs for tobacco and alcohol. And then similarly, the CID Division's Traffic Investigation Unit, we have run several, last year, we ran several operations on street racing with air resources and human resources on the ground. Special Victims Unit, they ran a couple of different operations to target online solicitations of a minor. These are all examples of the proactive enforcement that we do throughout the police department every year. Does anybody have any questions on that part?
No, sir. Do you have something? So on the hotspots with the map on there, I mean, as we've seen, we're seeing an overall decline in our crime rate across the board. What about these hotspots? Are we seeing increases, decreases, you know, in kind of these areas that are causing most of our problems?
The hotspots on this map as far as violent crimes, it stayed pretty, has stayed pretty consistent over the last several years and that's in that PSN zone. That's fairly consistent through the years. We have had some very high-profile incidents that fall outside the PSN zone. Those, like I say, are high-profile incidents. They get a lot of publicity, they're tragic, horrific incidents, but that one incident is not going to create a hotspot on its own.
And then of course, you know, the question came up after we had, you know, the shooting in downtown, which is there, but what, I mean, when you look at these hotspots and obviously, we've had instances and problems downtown in this same location or vicinity before where alcohol is served and those types of things, but what are the commonalities in these hotspots? I mean, is that, that kind of contribute to that?
Haley, do you know? Can you speak to that? What commonalities we're finding?
We can do more than check into it. Typically, it's just typical activities, night time, drinking, drunk with alcohol. And then the people involved. The people involved are usually the commonality.
Right.
And that actually leads to the bigger question of what causes crime in certain areas more than others and there's not any one answer for that. There's a range of things that, some we directly affect, some we don't. Socioeconomic conditions, lack of education, lack of resources, those all play into where you're going to end up with your hotspots.
And what about, so if you're looking at bars or other establishments, so they're making the majority of their money off of alcohol and they have TABC that are regulating them. I mean, if there are particular instances where you're continuing to have problems in that area, can you work with TABC? I mean, what is, when something is happening in a location that seems to be related to alcohol, the type of business there, what, how does that work? What are the, you know, what are our tools in enforcement when it comes to alcohol license and those types of things?
We do work with TABC. TABC has a range of administrative mechanisms they can use that are not available to us. There are some criminal violations that we can use if we try to file those, but we do work closely with TABC and I'm not throwing anybody under the bus, TABC is as short-staffed as anybody else. But we went through a stretch where we, I don't feel like we were getting as much attention from TABC as what we felt like we could get. TABC has recently had a change of the director over this area. We have met with him. He's also in liaison with Captain Loftus and I feel optimistic about our future and how we work with TABC here.
And are there, and maybe this is, oh, Andrew, were you going to say something?
Oh, I was just going to add, I have reached out to TABC staff in Austin to try and schedule a follow-up meeting with the upper leadership level so we can continue the conversation to see what else we could be doing, also what they're doing as well to focus on some of these challenges. So we're still waiting to set that meeting up.
And are there any, when it comes to planning and zoning and alcohol licenses, what are the rules and regulations there? Does it have to be distance between them, you know, that type of thing?
Really, it comes down to distances from either churches, schools, daycares, but if they're outside of those zones, it comes down to zoning district, whether it's allowed by that zoning district is the only mechanism to prevent those businesses from going in.
And do we have any zoning districts where it may say, hey, in this zoning district, you know, alcohol licenses have to be this far apart or they can't be all together or that type of stuff or pretty much across the?
No, ours are just based on distances from those establishments by state law.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Chief.
You have a question?
I don't think so.
Chief, thank you for, I didn't realize that was the end of the presentation. Thank you for the presentation. No, I mean, when he's done, he's done. So I would like to do one thing. I actually would like to just give a round of applause for all of our local heroes who are in here that are acknowledged. It's a, it's a simple thing, but recognition goes a long way. You know, from crime analytics to the civilian staff, the professionals that work day in and day out as kind of the backbone of the entire system. Nothing functions without you guys and so thank you. I know that our badgeed officers, uniformed police officers, you know, sometimes get that recognition out in the public and we want to make sure that you guys know that we see it, we see the work that you put in and we appreciate it. So thank you all. Did we have any other questions for Chief Johnson? I just let him walk away. Okay. Thank you, Chief. All good. We'll move on to item 7C. Do we have, Donnie? Mr. Hooper, if you'll come up and give us this or if you want to stay seated. We are looking for a 7C update on traffic accident data.
Okay, thank you so much and I want to just stay seated here if it's okay with you guys and we'll try out some of our new technology from here. This is a request that came from Councilman Sherlin. He requested a report. The way that we understood that report was to talk about fatal traffic accidents that occurred at controlled intersections here in Amarillo. So I have gathered a lot of data and you talked about the people from PD back here. We work really close with them when it comes to traffic accidents. So we've spent the past couple of weeks on the phone with them gathering all the data for this presentation here as presented to you. We'll also take a look at the overall annual accidents. Basically, what I'm going to do is look at 2024, what's occurred there. There's a little bit of data that we can compare for the past five years, but we're going to leave that to Emily's group for the Safe Streets presentation as they have a lot more in-depth data that goes all the way back five or six years. The second part of this presentation, there's three parts to it. The second part of it will be Alan Harder, Director of Public Works, is going to come up and talk about traffic signal timing and give you some information about that. So as far as this presentation is concerned, this slide right here represents a traffic accident, fatality accidents that occurred in 2024. There's a lot to unpack here. Out of those 20 fatal crashes, that was out of 6,084 total wrecks that occurred in the city in that same timeframe. So if you do the math on that, that's less than a half of 1% of our accidents were fatal accidents at our intersections here in Amarillo. Four of those fatalities were pedestrians and then there were five of the auto deaths that occurred in two wrecks where there were charges that were filed for intoxication manslaughter. I thought that was interesting to bring that fact as well. And if you look at the data on the fatal crashes on the left, you can see the contributing factors to those. 50% of those were attributed to speed and some of these are combined. Some of them have more than one factor that's combined into that one accident. Alcohol made up 25%. 5% of that was for illegal substances. 20% of that was for other, which is means failure to stop at a stop sign, disregarding a yield sign, things like that, that were in that other category of 20. If you look over on the right, the fatal crashes by year and you look at the five-year data, we're actually down this year. In fact, the second lowest out of the total of six years, having the 20 fatal crashes versus 30 that were in 2019, 24, 25 and 15 was a down year, or 22 was a down year with 15 and then we were back up to 24 in 2023. So again, 20 this year fares better than it did the previous years and second best out of that six-year total. The traffic fatalities at controlled intersections, this is a 14-month glance at that data. There were nine fatal crashes. Three of those involved motorcyclists, six of them were automobile accidents. There were 12 fatalities that came as a result of those nine fatal crashes. Overall, so that's 45% of our overall accidents, overall fatal accidents occurred at controlled intersections. Contributing factors, much the same, disregarding traffic control devices, speeding, alcohol, controlled substance, distracted drivers were just some of the reasons that we saw in some of the reports we got from APD. This is a map that we created. These are accidents that occurred. Again, these are just controlled intersections, fatal accidents. The green represents the motorcycle accidents that occurred. The red represents the automobile accidents that occurred. So again, six auto crashes, three of those motorcycle. This does not include the pedestrian fatalities and you can also see that one of those was located out by the Amarillo National Airport. That was a vehicle versus a semi truck that took place out there. This just gives you a better idea of those locations. You can see exactly where they occurred. There were two of those that were on the I-40 frontage road. There were three accidents that occurred on Saucy, one of those involving a motorcycle and then two of those, one of them was a double fatality that occurred at Saucy and 45th and then we had one that was at Wolfenland, Virginia. So that kind of gives you an overall look at where all those accidents occurred. I can answer questions now about that small report. We can move right into Alan's presentation if you'd like, but I can take a brief pause here if you'd like to ask some questions about that data before we move on with the second part of that presentation.
If you're all right, I think I'm going to ask a few and then we'll see if council has any other. So regarding Mr. Fisher's concern on the intersection and the timing, and Mr. Harder may speak more to it as well, but are those adjustable?
They are and in fact, that is what Alan's presentation is about. They're adjustable in one direction, some of them are not adjustable the other direction and he'll explain that, what that means. In other words, we can't lessen the time on some of those that are built into those cabinets or all of them that are built into the cabinets, but he can explain all that in his part of the presentation.
But if we had studies and some validity that showed a two-second delay would be safer on 120-foot intersection versus a second and a half, we'll have that data?
Yes.
Okay. My other question would just be in kind of some of the emails, maybe even social posts of racing and high-speed occurrences. So while Chief is still here, how does that normally work where, is that staff-driven for you guys to perform like a, you know, a speeding op where you're maybe using the drone technology or you're using some other method to monitor that? How do we get to that? If we could cover that before we go into the?
Sure, and I would defer that to Chief Johnson if he wouldn't mind coming back up.
Chief, if you could tell us just like, when, how often do you normally perform that? Is that a task or a task force that's set up that way?
Talking about the racing op?
Yes, sir, the racing op.
I think last year, we did two or three and it's mostly during the warmer weather when more people are out. That's where we see most of our issues with street racing. Everything we do comes with a cost. So if it's extra, we're having to pay extra. We take people out of their regular assignment and put them out for something like that, it costs extra. So we do try to be mindful of the public's money, but that's kind of how we plan it. The street racing ones are usually run through our traffic investigation unit, but they involve members of, throughout the department and other agencies at times.
Okay, yes, sir.
I was just going to add that we're fortunate to have the Motors team because they're basically dedicated full-time, year-round to go after some of these hotspots and they use that data to determine where they want to set up and monitor as well.
That's correct. I was thinking more of the planned ops, but that's part of Motors. And we actually also have grant money to enforce speeding, DUI, seatbelt violation and things like that. and things like that. So those are the things we've applied for to give us uh, extra resources to be able to uh, enforce some of these laws.
So springtime here, warmer weather coming, would we anticipate one or two uh, operations that would go into the public during this spring season, or would you know?
We're we're planning them right now. I I don't I don't want to say exactly when we'll be doing that. That kind defeats the purpose sometimes, but I can't tell you they are coming.
No, I think it's great to not speak specifically to exactly when or where, but I think it is good to message to our community that it's coming, and man, might be tomorrow right where you're used to racing. And so to discourage that, I think it's nice for our public to hear that we will be actively uh, law-enforcing this issue.
That's I I do think that's one of the things we could be better on is a uh, messaging to the public that we do do those throughout the year and and letting them know that, you know, we're we're not, we're not trying to, you know, beating anybody down. We're just, we have to start enforcing these. The numbers are what the numbers are.
Well, I think what we're trying to do is save lives, both those innocent lives that that are consequence because of somebody's reckless behavior, but also that life of that young man or woman that just wasn't mature enough yet to know that that wasn't a smart decision. And so um, I think we we may have all been there at one point, or at least most of us, and and we're thankful we lived through it. So I would love to uh, see one of those operations and then pull that data and advertise that to the community. Um, and then that way, the community sees both hands. One, we are trying to protect, but then also we're discouraging that if you know that you're more likely to um, you know, get arrested and go to jail for excessive speed.
I agree, I agree.
That's great. Thank you for letting me speak to that. I appreciate it, Chief. Council, you got any other questions for Mr. Hooper before he hands it over to Alan? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thanks, Mayor and Council. Y'all here be fine. Thanks. I just want to give a quick update uh, regarding traffic signal signal timing as it relates to intersection safety. Uh, so I'm gonna go over the purpose of timing standards, what those specific standards are, and then the factors that impact that timing. So the purpose is to ensure the safe transition of signals from green to yellow and then to red. Uh, the two standards that I'm gonna talk about are what are called the yellow change interval and the red clearance interval. That's often often referred to as the all red, and I'll define those uh, on on the next few slides. Those standards are published in the manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. These are nationwide standards that establish uniform criteria uh, for the use of traffic control devices, not just signals but signs, um, construction zones, things like that. The purpose of that is to ensure consistency for motorists traveling anywhere in the United States. If you're traveling in Amarillo, Texas, Bakersfield, California, or Richmond, Virginia, you can expect that you are gonna see traffic patterns that are very similar, uh, so you know they're consistent, and you can expect the same thing. So the first interval I'll talk about is the yellow change interval. Uh, that is the length of time that a yellow is displayed following a green signal. It confirms to motorists that the green has ended and that a yellow will soon follow. Uh, and it its goal is to provide time for drivers to react and to come to a stop before they get to that intersection, or if they're close enough to the intersection, to go ahead and get through the intersection uh, before the the light turns red. That's based on one factor. It's the speed limit of traffic approaching the signal. Uh, too brief a time may result in drivers being unable to stop safely, but too long of a time uh, results in drivers treating the yellow as an extension of the green, and it invites intentional uh, red light running. The minimum recommendation in the M U T C D is three seconds. That increases as the speed limit increases, because naturally you need more time to react and stop. One thing to note on the controllers that we use in the city of Amarillo, we cannot physically program a time less than three seconds. I tried it myself this afternoon, uh, just to be sure I was comfortable with that statement. The system, Larry, said you cannot program less than three seconds per M U T C D. I could not put that time in. I was working in a test platform, so it wasn't anything that was gonna go live, just so you know. The next standard is, again, what's called the red clearance interval or the all red. This is the length of time following a yellow signal that all signals in the intersection are red. The purpose of this is to provide additional time for traffic to clear the intersection before conflicting traffic is given a green signal. An example of that would be if I was traveling, let's just say, northbound uh, on an arterial street, and I was getting close to the intersection and it turned yellow. If that light turned red while I was either entering the intersection or somewhere in the intersection, there is enough time before the traffic coming east-west gets a green light that I can get out of that intersection safely. There are two factors that impact that duration. It's the speed limit of approaching traffic and the width of the intersection. Uh, the minimum recommendation in the M U T C D is one second. Uh, that duration increases with wider intersections. Naturally, you need more time to get across it, or with slower speed limits. We are able to program in uh, a lower times than one second, but we do not have any intersections that have lower times than one seconds. It'll actually, the system will give us a warning if we try to plug in uh, something lower than one. Uh, and most of our intersections actually are are looking at at durations uh, upwards of two to three seconds for that red clearance interval. So just to summarize, the two two factors or two, I'm sorry, standards uh, that really have to do with intersection safety are the yellow change interval and red clearance interval that provide a safe transition from green to yellow to red. Uh, the M U T C D is the standards that that we use to ensure consistency across the United States. The factors are speed limit and intersection width. And one thing I wanted to point out, traffic volume is not a factor, and so it's not something that has to be adjusted as we see growth uh, in the city. It purely is based on speed limit and intersection width. So typically, once these uh, values are set for an intersection, there's very little reason to change them. We do still uh, in traffic engineering, check them from time to time, make sure that they meet current standards as the M U T C D is updated. We always want to make sure that we're meeting the newest standards. Um, but within those standards, there's very little that happens that requires that to be changed. So with that, I'll ask you, have any questions?
Thanks, Alan. The only question I have is, do you know the last time that they were checked? I know you said from time to time, but?
Absolutely. So it's it's checked multiple times throughout the year. Annually, uh, we pull data working, again, with A P D on which intersections have the most collisions, not necessarily fatal, but the most collisions. Uh, and we check all of the top ones for those. And then routinely, as we get requests from citizens or complaints about would you check this, our traffic engineering department verifies those times.
Can you give an example in the past when y'all have increased the, just say, the all stop on the red?
Yeah, the only time, I can't give you a specific example. One thing that would require that would be, let's say, that there was a a speed limit change uh, on a particular street. That would require us to go in and and change those durations, but I don't have a specific example where I can think of recently uh, that we've changed the durations.
Thank you.
Question?
Alan, are we currently, and and this may be a question for you, maybe just for staff in general, are we currently applied for any grant funding that would reward a greater level of accidents?
I can't speak to that. That's not something I'm aware of.
Do we know?
I can't speak to that either.
Okay. So like, the grant funding that we're applying for, um, have you ever seen it where it's regulated or or relevant to the more traffic accidents you have, the more fatalities, the more money you get for your community?
I have not.
Okay. Um, so, and what I'm going to specifically is is the concern that maybe we are regulating these traffic intervals at a lesser second in order to allow for more traffic accidents to the detriment of our population so that we could get a grant fund. And so specifically speaking to that, you're, I mean, we don't know of a single grant fund that would reward that kind of uh, behavior. So, Mr. Fisher, do do us a favor. Come back up here in just a second. Let me get through my questions. Come back up here, and I'll ask you maybe your anecdotal evidence, like, to the the worst intersections, because we want to, we want to drill down on this. If this is a simple solution of maybe a half a second or a second for a red light, uh, an all-red interval, uh, I think we would, we would just want to know, what would be the limitations, Mr. Harder, on uh, you taking that direction from this council? Or do you need any data that drives that analytic?
Really no data. It's very objective. Uh, it's very simple engineering equations and graphs that show you for an intersection of a given width with a given speed limit, this is the recommended duration. Uh, as a professional engineer, I would advise against doing anything to increase that unnecessarily for that very reason of uh, expected standards across the country. Just like the yellow interval, if you increase it beyond what is required for safely clearing the intersection, again, we're talking about driving the speed limit, obeying the law, not entering the intersection after the light has turned red. Uh, by increasing it, you would encourage people to get used to, well, I have more time, uh, and then they go somewhere else, or they go to a different intersection in town, and we're not following that same standard.
I really appreciate that and and making good decisions that are data-driven. Also, though, we we want to look anecdotally with if we have an intersection, say, 45th and Saucy, that is high, do we have the opportunity, based on just that one intersection being, for whatever the reason is, maybe it's the way the sun sets, maybe it's just the traffic count over there, could we manually adjust that at a half second, or would you guys make a recommendation if you saw that evidence?
Certainly could be. I would, I would need to look into data as far as accident data, make sure that that actually supports uh, that there is a problem there beyond what we see at other intersections in town.
Okay. And then if we if we saw that, we we have the ability to calibrate or control those different intersections. So that that's really good to to understand. I was unaware of that, so this is educational for me, um, which is good. Do we have any other questions for Mr. Harder? Okay. Don't, don't run off. I do want to keep you here just because, Mr. Fisher, if you don't mind coming back up, Mike, we're gonna have you come back up. Um, if you have some data that you could share with us on, because the the email that I had gotten was racing down 45th and Saucy, and then you can step to this microphone right here, sir. And then I believe the intersection that is 45th and Saucy was the one that that you were looking at. Is that correct?
Well, it's uh, in front of United also. I don't think Mr. Hooper included the death that just happened most recently uh, in his data. He didn't talk about it anyways, I don't think.
That was a fatality at that intersection of 45th and Saucy?
Yes, and I believe they were coming across the street to to the neighborhood. I think they lived in Sleepy Hollow. And um, Ms., I'll answer your questions. So what did, what else?
Yeah, grant, well, what I wanted to know was if there was any grants out there that were rewarding, you know, uh, you know, losses. So the the greater the accident rating, the greater the grant is not good business, um, I don't think. I think if you, if you're driving grants for additional um, technology and things like that based on traffic count and volume, I think that's what they're looking at, right, Mr. Harder?
I can't speak to that for the grants, yes, sir.
Well, I've got it right here. Ms. Kohler presented just not too long ago.
Okay.
And that's what brought my attention to this. I I, again, made the assumption that money was involved whenever I made the post years ago. I said, there's gotta be something involved with money when I made my post, and I didn't know until I came in here, because I got a weed notice, and I'm sitting here watching Ms. Kohler present safer streets projects, and she got five, they applied for a grant, got $500,000, and it, they showed a map of the of the unsafe intersections.
Okay.
And and I'll give you one that's just so obvious. I come home late a lot uh, from from work, and I hit that, I hit Saucy, and it's right there. It's the first light headed uh, north off of Hollywood on Saucy, across from that new credit union that's built there.
Okay.
When you're driving north, that light turns red. For me, I'm the only person on the road, because it's 3:00 in the morning, and I, and it happens a lot. That light turns red for me. So think of the scenario. I can't see to the right. So if I'm used to that thing turning around, I'm like, ah, nobody's ever here, I'll just gun it. I can't see because there's a building right here.
Sure.
Man, that's crazy.
But you're saying you would intentionally run a red light to cause that accident?
Yeah, I would, no, I'm just kidding on that. But I'm saying you're, 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 uh, being a human being, you you make decisions, your subconscious goes, you know what, there's never, there's never anybody here. I'll just, I I, you know, I might just relax through it, I'm not paying attention, because I'm not making an excuse that it's okay to run red lights, but what I am saying is that our lights are tricking people.
Well, I I would like to say, and and specifically, that's what I want to talk about. I want to, I want to show that our lights are not tricking people. I want to show there's uniformity, and I want to show that the engineering behind it does not consider uh, the human element that says we're gonna willfully break a law. That's why engineers are good. Um, there are other factors in life where we calculate the human uh, element, but engineering most of the time is nuts and bolts, black and white. And so it's gonna be data-driven, and so if we can show uniformity in those intersections, I think it'd go uh, pretty good ways to the fact that we're trying to receive grants. We are supporting safer streets. Um, we're not gonna vote against a a cause that makes our streets safer, but we also don't want to invite criticism that we somehow qualified for a grant because we lessen the safety of an intersection, so.
But you have to have unsafe streets to get the unsafe street grant.
Well, I don't, I don't believe that you have to show that you are, um, well, I guess what I would say is, I believe that we can show that we are uniform and that we are regulating, monitoring, all of that, and I, and I believe that our our public accepts that when they can see it. So uh, thus the transparency and the open questioning and you involved in our discussion here today, uh, because I think this is the best way for us to interact. So specifically, your intersection that is 45th and Saucy, uh, tell me how that intersection operates according to the way you've observed it.
Well, I'll give you one. If you're driving, and this is to my benefit, and I don't agree with it the way it works.
Okay.
When I leave my house and I pull out on 45th, that light, I never have to stop at that light. And normally, the through traffic gets the benefit, and you have to sit there for a while, and that makes sense, because there's a lot of traffic going north and south.
Okay.
I never have to stop at that light, ever, and I live right there, and that's most of the time I go that way. So it, it turns green and stops even busy traffic so I can go through. So now you're depending on 30 or maybe, maybe 30 cars, maybe 10, but for everybody to be in sync. So when your subconscious at work, when you know, when you get home and you're like, man, I'm not drinking, but I don't, I, I don't remember stopping any lights, and we all do that, and it's our subconscious deciding. So if the traffic lights don't work the way we intend them, or we expect them to work.
Sure.
We, that subconscious is kicking in, and and we're autopiloting through these lights, and they don't work the way that they should work or normally or the way we expect them, but that light in particular.
Well, let me say this. I appreciate the indulgence with council and with our audience here. Um, so I think you're proving the point that Mr. Harder is making. Uniformity is gonna be important. We don't want to be real subjective. Uh, we want to be objective, because you you are multitasking anytime you're handling that vehicle, and so if you're used to them always kind of taking so much rhythm in what you get used to, I think that's why we want to make sure it's uniform. Mr. Harder, will you have something that you can, uh, you know, the data, the study that you could bring back to council just for a future update that would investigate this one, this one particular intersection in relationship to the other hotspots? Yes, or Mr. Hooper?
Yeah, I I think it, um, one thing that we might mention, there, we were talking about grants a moment ago. We applied for a grant, was that the attain grant? Yeah, we were denied, right? So we had applied for an attain grant, which was actually gonna give us the ability to put S P M uh, systems on all our traffic signals. What that is, is an automated system that detects a vehicle is there. 3:00 in the morning, there's no vehicles there, and it's gonna look at it, and it's gonna say, hey, this is green for the through traffic, and it keeps it that way until a car approaches, and it replaces the in-ground uh, monitoring system we have. We were denied that grant, but that was to improve those traffic systems to where we could actually flow traffic a little bit better, especially in some of the inter, in the intersections where, and I see that, I go through that myself. I pull up and went to the grocery store at night, and we sat there at the red light, and there's no other cars coming the other direction. That system fixes that. We have started installing that in some locations in Amarillo, but again, it comes back to a funding issue. And so that's part of our long-range plan is to get systems like that in place that works with our traffic management system that we installed in 2019 to reach its full potential. So I thought that, that would fit into this conversation pretty well. That, that is one of the things we are working on.
So, Mr. Fisher, if you'll allow us to bring the data back, we'll let you evaluate it on your own. You can go back out and re-observe it, time it, whatever you'd like to do. I think that's good civic engagement on your part. And then for us, let us fulfill, you know, the other side of this. Let us show you where the money comes from, what criteria we had to meet to get it. And then is there any incentive there that would be working against the safety of the population? Because I can assure you, everyone up here wants to lower those traffic fatalities to the, the most possible. And we also want to lower the risks by, you know, uniformity and making sure that everything is getting checked. So I believe staff to be doing a good job on this. And so until we're shown otherwise, like, I, I think we're, we're making good progress. But a lot of what I'm hearing from, you know, comments and social and, and maybe the public is a willful disregard for, for the law. I mean, there's, there are excess speeds, well over a hundred miles an hour. You're running red lights three or four seconds after. You know, you've got people that are on their cell phone, they're distracted. If we have something that we're in control of, by all means, you're helping us make it better. And so we want to work with you. And, and so that's why I think this is a good discussion. I appreciate you participating in it.
All right.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Harder. Yes, sir.
I was just going to clarify. So the Safe Streets for All Grant Program that we have participated in, we have been awarded grants. I was looking at the U.S. Department of Transportation website. And as in the frequently asked question, it says, if my community does not have a history of high roadway collisions, deaths, and injuries, could it still be selected for an award? And it says, yes, it is possible to not have a high number of roadway deaths and serious injuries and still receive a planning demonstration grant or an implementation grant. So it is not a requirement to have high data and fatalities to, to be eligible for these programs.
Thank you for that. That's additional data. Let's pull a couple of our sister cities that are similar to us, McKinney, Lubbock, whatever. Let's see where we, where we stack up next to them in some of these fatalities.
Yes, sir.
Anything further for, for this subject, council? Okay. Mr. Hooper, thank you. Y'all don't need any direction from council, correct?
No, sir. I think we got it.
Really good. That concludes item seven C. We'll move forward to item seven D. Ms. Kohler, if you'll come up here and talk about our safer streets.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and council. This is my first time up here. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Thank you. So we are working on a plan to increase roadway safety in Amarillo. And I, I think I just want to say that the whole point of this is to do a thorough and comprehensive analysis to figure out exactly what are those conditions that are causing our roads to be unsafe, have good data. But we are, part of this is about pursuing grant funding for the city, funding that the city doesn't have to find itself to address those challenges. So this is an effort that has been underway for about a year. We were awarded the planning grant in 2022 and the Safe Streets and Roads for All Planning Grant. And we contracted with the Goodman Corporation, their transportation planning experts based in Houston to conduct the process for us and do the analysis for us. And so we started in January of last year. I've been, I have been up here presenting progress reports to you, but today I did ask our experts to come. So we have Robert McAney, who's our project principal, and Eagle Tang, who's our project manager. So they're going to do the bulk of this presentation and can help answer questions and address any concerns that you have. But before I turn it over to them, I, I wanted to reiterate that we've had an incredible amount of public participation in this effort. It's so clear that Amarilloans really care about this. This is a continuation essentially of the community goals from City Plan to work on our streets, work on mobility issues, transportation challenges. So we're building off actually years of, of community participation work for this effort. And we'd like to make sure today, this is obviously not an action item, we'd like to make sure that we do address those concerns that the community may have or that you may have before we bring this back. So the idea is that we would come back as an action item on the next agenda for adoption of this plan. And then, yes, we would be continuing to work on funding projects specifically within this, which Robert and Eagle will share in more detail with you. So I think that's all I had, and I'll let you guys take it from here.
Great. Thank you, council and mayor. I just want to start with saying, thank you for having us. We have, just to give you a little bit, I, I'd like, if it's okay, mayor, if I could answer one of the questions from the last, last piece. I have a little bit of experience doing grants, probably done about a thousand of them now plus for safety and other projects. And just to say that there are grant programs that do provide a higher score with more severe accidents, fatalities. Not necessarily the Safe Streets for All program, but the transportation alternatives and others. However, with that said, it would be an absolute grave violation of professional ethics to essentially cook the books, change the design to have more fatalities, severe accidents, whatever. We would never, we would never participate in that as a firm. I don't think anyone in the city would participate in that. Certainly not someone that's a professional planner or a professional engineer. So with that said, the goal is, is that you're actually not eligible for those grants because the goal is you have safer streets, right? And that's why we started with this plan and at, as, for a comprehensive approach to look at those streets and to look at all of your network and all of the accidents over between the years of 2019 and 2023. I have the clicker. There we go. Project team, we worked primarily with the planning department, Emily, Sherry, Joy, John. Great staff to work with. I really want to thank them. We, we had a, we had a, I felt like a really good relationship, very responsive, et cetera. We also worked with the engineering department, the traffic department, the transit department. We worked with the school districts, fire, police. So we had a lot of interaction with folks, as you'll see here in a minute, about how many public engagement and stakeholder engagement we got. So a little bit of project background. Safe Streets for All Program, it's a grant program that came out of bill, which is the bipartisan infrastructure law. There was about $5 billion in appropriated funds over five years. That $5 billion included funds for planning and demonstration grants, which you guys have received one for both. The first one was the 2022, you received about $240,000 in federal funds to complete a Safe Streets for All plan. It's basic, it's the basic building blocks for understanding the roadway and reducing crashes. So the idea for the Safe Streets plan is to bring the data analysis and community input together and open the door for funding opportunities. A little bit more on the project background. So in order to do a plan, we look at data analysis and community engagement to come up with projects. There's also kind of a third piece of that, and that's stakeholder engagement. We lumped that in with community engagement. You can see the three, three people there, also council and, and planning staff and, and all of the folks that we just talked about. Bringing all three of those together is really important. The first thing that we came up with was, was a vision. And the vision is to reduce 35% of fatal or severe crashes by, by the year 2025, 35. Now, Eagle will talk about this here in a second. We only looked at crashes on non-interstate roadways, okay? So the data you saw just a minute ago is going to be slightly different because there were some interstate-related fatalities in that data. But we want to reduce 35%, which is about 60 fatal and severe crashes by 2035. And we're saying that hopefully, if you were to, you know, implement some of these strategies, that, that that would take place. Public engagement. I, I wanted to, I want to talk about public engagement, so I asked Eagle if I could have these slides, and I'll, I'll turn it over to our project manager. Because we're really, really proud about the public engagement, and I think the city should be very proud too. I've worked on dozens and dozens of planning studies over my 20-year career of working on transportation plans. And I can say this is the, probably one of the top five most engaged communities slash plans that I've ever been part of. I always like to say that I really want the public engagement to, to help drive recommendations out of the plan. That's the goal. Sometimes it doesn't always happen. We know this because sometimes we just, we just don't get the public engagement. But between staff and the consulting staff, we worked really hard, and you can see all of the different pieces here. Online surveys, committee meetings, stakeholder meetings, I mean, pop-up events. I think I have a T-shirt back there as well with a little QR code on it. And as a result, we received almost 7,000. So if anybody wants to respond in the next 30 minutes, that would be great. But 6,900, y'all, this is really impressive. It's so impressive that we got selected to present at the Transportation Research Board in DC in January as a, as a result to, to really show off this plan. We also, folks had talked to us, they wanted us to come and present some more to say, hey, how did you get so much engagement? And how did it drive your recommendations? And with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to Eagle to kind of talk about how the public engagement. And then Eagle will talk about the technical piece, and then we'll, we'll, we'll conclude with some of the projects that we propose.
Thank you, Robert. Can I have the clicker?
Absolutely.
All right. All right. I'm going to talk about, briefly talk about crash summary, high injury network development, and our proposed safety projects. As for the crash, crash summary, we looked at 2019 to 2023 data. And between those five years, there were a total of 18,023 crashes occurred. The reason that we looked at 2019 to 2023, because it's common to look at a five-year planning horizon to perform the analysis. And also, like Emily stated, that our project kicked off in January 2024, so we weren't able to look at the 4/2024 data. And like Robert mentioned briefly about the interstate, our crash dataset excluded any crashes occurred on the interstate because anything have to fix the interstate is very, very expensive. And because we have very limited safety resources and funding, we are trying to prioritize city streets, city facilities, like FM Road or Route 66, those people use it every day instead of those tech stuff facilities that they own and they maintain. And to the map on the right side, it's a hotspot analysis. We can see that generally, a lot of crashes occurred near downtown area and some north, south, or east-west major corridors in the west side of the town. As for the fatality rate, fatality rate is the number of fatal crashes occurred per 100,000 population. And the thicker blue line stands for Amarillo, and the thinner black line is state of Texas. So we can see that between 2019 to 2023, Amarillo is generally lower than the state average. However, there was a spike between 2020 to 2023. And from these, within these five years, there were a total of 64 fatalities and 446 severe injuries. As for the emphasis area, this is what we usually call focus area or major safety concerns. These are the six major safety concerns and any plan that you should look at. And if you look at the very right columns at difference, if it's a positive number, meaning that Amarillo has higher than state average number of crashes in this area. If we have a negative number, meaning that Amarillo has a lower than state average in this area. So we can see that Amarillo, it's only lower the average in distraction in driving, meaning everybody pays a lot more attention on the road in Amarillo than the rest of Texas. However, for the rest of five aspects, vulnerable roadway users usually refer to pedestrians and bicyclists. These are the people, when they're involved in crashes, they tend to get more severely injured. Intersection related, meaning those crashes occurred by people turning improperly or doing white turns. Speed related, very easy to understand, speeding or failed to control their speed. Left turn related, this usually refers to people trying to turn from the middle turn lane to the plaza or shopping centers. And the last one is stop, people run the stop sign or traffic signal. And I do want to say that speeding is the number one reason why crashes occur in the Amarillo. About high injury network, high injury network essentially ages a roadmap showing people where are the most dangerous roadways. And it's also a tool that often used by planners, engineers to identify projects or prioritize funding resources. However, I do want to clarify that this is a tool that helps to make the decision. It does not make the decision because when we prioritize projects or apply for funding opportunities, we would also look at public engagement, crash analysis, and some engineering aspects before we make the decision. The screenshot on the screen is a, our high injury network interface. If you're interested, feel free to scan the QR code and take a look at on your phone. So unlike other safety action plans, you, we usually propose only one high injury network. For Amarillo, we proposed four. And these four are under two big categories. One is all modes of transportation, including biking, walking, and driving. And the other one is only for vulnerable roadway users. And under each of them, we proposed high injury corridor and high injury intersections. Because of the time limit here, I'm going to go, only to go through the all modes of transportation, high injury corridor, and high injury intersection. As for the high injury corridors, if you see the map on the right, you see two colors of lines, orange lines and red lines. These orange lines are high injury corridors. These red lines are top 15 high injury corridors, meaning that among all of these high injury corridors, these top, these 15 corridors rank the highest. And overall, more than 60% of fatal and severe crashes occurred on just less than 9% of Amarillo's roadways. Similarly, regarding the high injury intersections, more than 63% of fatal and severe injuries occurred on just 2% of Amarillo's intersections. So now we looked at these high injury intersections. It will help us to propose, to propose countermeasure and find where these countermeasures will be best effective. And by combining the public engagement that Robert covered earlier and engineering studies or analysis, including right-of-way analyzation, drainage, and the utility real consideration, we proposed a total of 16 safety projects. And these 16, 16 projects are divided into short-term, medium-term, and long-term. These are referring to the size of the project, meaning how much they cost, and also the complexity of the project, meaning are they, do they need to coordinate with other agencies? Or do they need to, utility relocation, so on and so forth? So among these 16 projects, City had applied funding for five of them. And, and then we heard back from one project, and that is project number one, Safer Speed for Schools. I want to call out that the Safer Speed for Schools is one of the few projects that is not on the High Injury Network. We're aiming to reduce speed at five schools, including Margaret Wilson Elementary School, San Jacinto Elementary School, Olson Park Elementary School, Hamlet Elementary School, and then David Crockett Middle School. For the rest of the four, these are the projects City had pursued or is currently pursuing funding for the rest. So we already got project number one awarded, and we are really, really grateful for the community engagement and the, for the community engagement that we collected. I would like to share another achievement on top of this funding success is that we are gaining a lot of nationwide recognition. I think Robert mentioned a little bit, back in January, the manager of, sorry, I can't get the name right. Manager of Communication Engagement, Sherry Kendall and I went to the Annual Transportation Research Board. We also know as TRB. TRB is the biggest annual transportation convention. It attracts 15, over 15,000 of participations worldwide every year to go to that convention. And Sherry and I were able to present in front of them showcasing how great Amarillo did in public engagement and in funding pursue. And during our presentation, we met somebody from Social Pinpoint. Social Pinpoint is a nationwide survey company. They spotted, saying this is probably one of the biggest three, or top three engagement they have ever seen in their entire career. And they had invited us to do a webinar in April that had an average attendees of 600 to present and basic showing off how great Amarillo did in both the planning and funding pursue and engagement. And we're also got selected into, present into TRB again, but this time a sub-branch called Tools for Trade in June to showcasing to everyone that how great Amarillo did in the safety plan, in the public engagement, and in these funding pursue. So I think this is a great opportunity for the city to show to everyone, like, cities not only working with the safety experts, but also working with the communities, with the public, with the publics, that we are trying to save lives. And this is a plan we're trying to prove, and I think we proved with our project number one. This plan is not just some lines and dots on a map. It's not just some sitting documents on the shelf. It is a roadmap for real, fundable, and implementable projects. And this is just a beginning because we all know roadway safety is an ongoing effort. And our plan lays a very nice foundation for continued action, collaboration, and investments in making Amarillo's streets safer for everybody. And that wraps up our presentation today. Thank you.
Yeah, questions? Thank you, guys. Questions, council? Question?
Quick question. On the Safer Speed for Schools, what were those schools again? And what exactly, what exactly will happen that will, that facilitate that?
So Hamlet Elementary School, Margaret Wilson Elementary School, Olson Park Elementary School, San Jacinto Elementary School, and David Crockett Middle School. So these are the five schools. And we are planning to install speed cushions and tough curbs to shorten the crossing distance for the student to crossing the intersections. And for, to install the speed cushion, we're trying to reduce the speeding behavior and speeding-related crashes.
Yeah, that's a demonstration project for the Safe Streets for All. So typically in demonstration, they call it paint and post. So things that you can take down if you, if you, if you so needed to, right? And it's not, it's not, it's not a significant investment. It's more of a, a smaller investment to, to demonstrate whether or not this should be a, a permanent improvement.
So that we're tracking, you know, because we work on multiple things, especially with like our MPO. So walkability in the community, bike lanes, all sorts of things like that. Do, do, does your safety plan have any of those involved?
Our safety plan definitely looks at walkabilities and bike abilities, but mostly from the safety perspective. But we also looked at connectivities to the schools, to the park. And our public engagement analysis, which is published online, also reflect, reflect that. And we're also looking at accessibilities, meaning people using wheelchairs can access shops and schools easily as well.
One of the driving goals, and I, it was on one of the slides earlier, was, was all users. Right? And so we want to make sure we look at all users. We don't want to come here as, you know, an advocate for bikes or an advocate for peds or an advocate for auto. We, we think that, you know, a life is important, no matter if you're on a bike, you're walking, or you're in an auto. And so we're looking at all the different pieces of that. So to answer your question, several of these projects will include or do include proposed bike and ped improvements.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Mrs. Kohler, are you back up to maybe give us next steps, or does this conclude the presentation? I think that's probably my question would be, thank you, Robert. Appreciate it, Eagle. My, my question would be, you know, we're understanding there will be some different implementations to help control and make things safer, depending on what school you're at or what the, the vulnerability is. What's the next step? And then what would, what would be the timeframe? When would council have something like? When would council have something like that back?
So for the, the plan itself, this is the plan. And it's posted on our website right now. We did a review period in February. I looked at the comments this morning. I can tell you that these, there aren't negative comments about the plan. People are really happy with the plan. It's about, hey, can you do more, or what about this location? So I think the, the plan itself is, as far as being vetted and through the process, is, is ready for approval. But we have been applying for funds for these projects that are in here already. So the, the implementation of this is underway. So the safe, the safer speeds for schools, we are essentially waiting on a funding agreement. It's federal funding, and so we're waiting for the go-ahead. We had hoped to design and construct and do a baseline measurement to be ready for the next school year. So to, to install over the summer, the summer '25, and be ready for the fall of '20. That, there's no way that's going to happen, so we've pushed that back another year. So we'd be looking at the fall of '26 for the installation of our demonstration project. And I think that's a really good way to think about how some of these projects are designed. It's, it's about testing some of these ideas in Amarillo in one place. And if the community likes them, and they work, and we measure and can tell that they are making a difference, then we can implement them in other aspects. And so the 16 is just kind of a sampling of different strategies. We, we will, some of those are going to be easier to do than others. And these are all, you mentioned MPO. A couple of these projects are in your category seven and category nine funding requests. That's an important funding source for us as well, and we're already pursuing those. So I don't know, does that answer your question about next steps?
Yeah, I think so. So do you need council to support prior to going out for these funding mechanisms? Or will, have you already been able to do that? And, and then the next trigger would be the, the award?
Absolutely. If we had resolutions of support for these applications, I think that would help us greatly. We have included some letters of support for the safe streets. We had the school district participate with us on that one, which I think was meaningful. But yeah, I think as we move forward, that would be a good practice for us is to have a, a council resolution for any of these applications.
Council, you want to give any direction on any of that? Are y'all comfortable with the overview of what, what this would include? Or do you need more details before you'd support it?
No, I think it looks good. Thank you for all of your work on it.
Yeah, I think it's good, especially with the community support. I think it's a good idea, if we can do a resolution.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, so I think the direction to take from here would be to go get us a, a letter of support that we could contribute to if you need us to, but then let us try to help advocate for some of those grant fund dollars.
Okay.
And Emily, I think the plan is next meeting to adopt the plan, so that's a big next step.
Yeah, so we'll bring the plan. If, if you're ready for it, we'll bring the plan. And then I think we just note that for any of these projects that are coming out of this, that our practice would be that we would come to you for a resolution, a resolution of support for any application that we would be submitting.
Okay. Councilman?
I want to congratulate you and everybody at the Office of Engagement Innovation, your team, for hitting another, I would call it a grand slam, not just a home run, on the community involvement part of it. I think the biggest thing is, you know, in the community, you know, people just want to feel like they're listened to, that, that you're getting input from them. They realize at the end of the day, as long as you're listening, you may not, you know, you may not be able to do everything. I guess my question would be of the nearly 7,000 people that have responded, how did that influence? I mean, was there something that came up out of the community part that said, wow, we just hadn't really been thinking about that? Or something that, that said, well, we're going to tilt a little bit this way? Or how did that community input really impact what we're looking at today?
Well, I think, and Eagle touched on this, the example of the safe speeds, safer speeds for schools project. She mentioned that, that where those improvements are going to be installed are not actually on that high injury network. But because safety around schools was really probably the, the top priority in our online mapping exercise, that that's why we decided to pursue a, a school safety project. And then those are some of the neighborhoods that were most vocal. So Olson Park was one of the most vocal neighborhoods in the process as well. And so the community input paired with the safety data helps us prioritize the projects.
And sorry, it just came up. I would also like to mention that the community engagement part also filled the gaps of what crash data won't show us because, because Amarillo is going, growing rapidly. And we use what Cock historical data from 2019 to 2019, 2023. There are some new roads that have been built, which the crash data is, is not captured in the crash system. However, the communities had put lots of comments on that type of road, and that will eventually shape our project, become one of our proposed projects.
Good. Well, thank you. And just, just to note, because it comes up often, I believe three of those schools are north of I-40. Two of those schools are south of I-40 in those areas. So I'm glad we're getting that input from all areas of, of the community as well.
Yes, and sorry, I talk a lot. We also call these projects pilot projects. These are the projects, you know, we tried, I figure people would ask why these five projects, not the other projects? Because we're trying to make sure that we can, we, our projects stay competitive so we can secure funding. And then once we got implemented and get good results, we can go back to the veteran days saying, hey, we have done these projects before, now we would like, and they got really, really great result. And now we would like to apply for more fundings for, for more students and benefit more schools.
Really good. I think that takes care of it on our end. So thank you to you and Robert for your work on this. Thank you, Ms. Kohler. We'll look forward to coming back to council.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much.
Appreciate you. Okay, so we are at 4:35. I think we can take a 15-minute recess, come back in here, and then push for maybe an hour to get through the rest of it and get, get everybody out of here. Mr. Danforth, it's like perfect in here. I see my wife grabbed her coat, so like you have the AC functioning very well. So thank you, guys. We'll see you back here in a few.
So I'd like to take that into consideration when setting their fees, stating that between the two permits together, they can't be charged more than the highest fee structure that we have. Both of, and I'll tell you, it's about $8,000 in savings across the 39 facilities. Both of these ideas for childcare centers and public schools were brought to me by both of these entities last fiscal year. And I thought they were really good ideas, things that I didn't come up with, so I appreciate that partnership with these entities. And I think it's something that we can, it would make sense to implement. Section three, I'd like to remove some duplicate language out of our ordinance that is already written into state law. Specifically talks about vended water, water vending machines. This is already in Texas Administrative Code Title 25 and partially transcribed within our city ordinance. So it doesn't make sense for that to be there any longer. And then section four, I'd like to make a couple of changes to our grease trap ordinance. We'll talk about those. One, removing the extensively remodeled definition or renovated definition up to the definition section within the ordinance, which would apply to everything. I'd like to expand the acceptable design professional list for hydro mechanical units to include master plumbers, our staff, and product manufacturers. Currently, the ordinance only allows for licensed professional engineers to size these when necessary for hydro mechanical units. So if you use a gravity flow unit, anybody can size it. If you use a hydro mechanical unit, an engineer has to size it. When we first wrote that ordinance, we looked across the state of Texas. There's some model ordinances out there, and a lot of them had that language in it, so we adopted it as well. Licensed engineers were charging about $200 to do that. I think the cost to size one of these is upwards of $1,000 now. So I'd like to diversify that and allow master plumbers, our staff, product manufacturers to size. It's really easy to do and only takes 10, 15 minutes. So I think that would be a good benefit to the community, something to help lower some costs for them. And then additionally, I'd like to add some tank tea criteria. I'll show you some pictures of what I'm talking about here in a minute. But when a grease trap is missing tank teas, essentially it doesn't work the way it's intended to, allowing grease to move through the tank and not be captured in the tank. So I'd like to add some criteria that if tank teas are missing or damaged, how they have to be reinstalled. Okay, this won't impact any existing facility unless their grease trap is damaged and doesn't have these. Typically, if the grease trap is new, or you know who installed it, or you know the product manufacturer, you can look up their specifications. The code would still allow for that. A lot of the ones that we're seeing that are damaged or missing are really old. We have no idea who made them or when they were installed, so we have nothing to refer back to. So we're trying to set that criteria, saying if we don't know, you install it to this standard. Not only will that help the grease traps operate in the way they were meant to, it'll help our wastewater treatment plan, it'll help our lift stations, it'll help the overall health of our wastewater collection system. So a tank tea, so a typical grease trap is a two compartment chamber that you put water through it, and it separates fats, oils, and greases in the first compartment and allows sludge to fall to the bottom. Only clean water moves to the second compartment, and then it does further separation, and then only clean water moves outside into our sewage collection system. Once these tanks are full, you pump them out and you take that to an acceptable location. Without the tank teas, which I have put red arrows to, the trap doesn't work at all. It allows grease to flow straight through to the city sewer line. And we're finding quite a few of them that are either damaged, not there, or were never installed, so we'd like to address that. Here's a few pictures that kind of notate what I'm talking about here. Each one of these don't have tank teas installed. So you can see on the third example, when the water flows in, it stirs the grease layer that's supposed to float to the top. It stirs it up and allows it to move on to the second compartment. And then if you don't have them on either side of the tank, the inlet or outlet, it just allows grease to flow straight through. So these are pretty minor changes to our ordinance that I think will have positive impacts to our community, our regulated business partners, or our operations. And with your support, I'd love to take this to, for an agenda item next session. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Whenever you reach out to the restaurant community, do they have any negatives on this?
So this was presented to the Panhandle Restaurant Association multiple times, and I believe they sent these out to all of their members for questions. Last time I met with them was early January, and I sat down and answered a ton of these questions. The main concern that I received was regarding the grease trap change for the tank tea is how will this impact my current system? Do I have to go in and retrofit it to meet the new standard? And the answer is no. The only have to make a change is if your system is damaged or missing something. So if your system has tank teas that were installed and met the criteria where they installed, it doesn't impact you at all. This is only if they're missing. And with that explanation, we received a letter of support.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Question?
No?
Anything? Okay. Anthony, good job on this, because I know it's easy to just get in there and start manipulating codes and work on what you're thinking, or maybe see it from more of the regulatory side. So I think the steps with the public and especially the restaurant group, very, very helpful. So I think we're in support, we'll look for you bringing it back.
Absolutely, and I will say, we have a fantastic relationship with our restaurant community, and we work together quite often, so I appreciate hearing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spinel, appreciate it. That moves us out of 7E and into 7F. We're going to kick it back over to Donnie Hooper and talk about a potential parking facility.
Okay, thank you so much. This is to discuss possible conversion of a existing city facility that we have across the street. You've seen 31,000 square foot warehouse located at 500 South Grant into an additional parking area for City Hall. This is not, as we heard in our public comment, this is not to demolish this building at all. This is to convert this building into a usable space. Also discuss the estimated cost for remodels as we go through this presentation. This is the south facing view of that warehouse, which originally was purchased as part of the overall purchase of the Emerald Hardware property when we bought it. This loading dock that you see out in front of that is a big modification that would have to occur to turn that into a parking garage. We'd have to remove that entire loading dock and then convert some of those doors and windows and things across the building so that we could use it as that facility. And I'll show you in some renderings in a minute what that would look like. This is the same, that's the same front dock that's on there. That's the side view on Grant Street as you're looking to the northwest, and you see the windows that are up there. Those same windows exist on the north side of the building and on the west side of the building as well. This is a rendering of what this would look like if it was turned into a parking facility. You can see that it has an exit ramp on that side, an entrance ramp on the other side, and I've got another rendering I'll show you in just a second. You also see the steps and the ADA access from that front view. This is that same side view looking to the northwest. You see several things there, including the entrance ramp, the car going in there, and you see the exit ramp on the other side, the ADA ramp that would be required, and also the streetscape that would not only add to the aesthetics of downtown, but would just, it would make the facility look a lot nicer next to this brand new City Hall that we're sitting next to as well. This is a top open view of that, of kind of what you'd see inside. It's just an open span building that has the columns in the center of that, very easy to turn into that parking area. Jerry actually looked at this when we were first looking at the acquisition of the property, and that's the first thing he saw was that this would be a great place to have additional parking for City Hall. There's about 66 parking spaces that would be available in there. We thought it was going to be closer to 70, but there are a couple of fire stands in there that you have to manipulate around not being able to park in those areas. But it would relieve a lot of our parking that we have out front, especially when we have some of the larger meetings that take place here, whether it be a council meeting or some other meeting that takes place at City Hall. We've talked about eventually, at some point in time, if the council entertained it and we wanted to lease out some space as well, that there would be additional parking needs for the building also. Cost estimate, 1.25 million. Again, this is just an estimate, and I want you to hear that word, because we are working on the numbers now, and we should be getting some final numbers back this week, I'm assuming, by the end of the week probably. So before we get to the next council meeting, we should have you some accurate numbers on there. Just so that you know, about 250,000 of that is just for streetscape. That's what we're estimating that we'd spend on that. Building renovation would have some asbestos abatement that would have to occur, the ramps and ADA I talked about, the ventilation system. All those windows that you see would be converted into vents. We have to have that for, obviously, for exhaust fumes and things like that. And then, so a little bit of roof drain work. The roof is in very good shape, by the way. Jerry was giving me a report on that just yesterday. And then we have a storm drain removal. There's an abandoned storm drain that we would have to get rid of that runs along the sidewalk over there, where whether we turn that into a parking lot or we turn it into a parking garage, it's going to have to be removed no matter what. And then we have gate arms that would have to be installed for security purposes to be able to have badge access to that. And there's the security and badge access. So that was the total cost of 1.25 million. This is an item that, of course, council asked us to bring back at the last meeting, and we just wanted to kind of give you the numbers and let you know how that, what we're looking at doing there. This was taken out of the project whenever we were looking at the overall scope and budget of the project of 35 million and realized that we were not going to be able to do this, so it was pulled and taken back out of the original project for City Hall. Then we also have streetscape that was on there as well, and then I can answer any questions if you should have them.
How many employees do we have here at City Hall? I mean, I know this is a guess, but how many are parking? How many cars?
That's what, yeah, it's 175.
175 vehicles each day?
175 employees, so depends, and generally, everybody drives their own vehicle, so. Andrew tried to give me a ride one time, but I denied it.
Good call.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did that. How many? How many spaces do we have out front now? Yeah, I'm looking at Jerry.
I can tell you this, we did the math, we counted these over and over and over and over again, and we had approximately the same amount of parking spaces that we had in just the east side of the old City Hall. It's just elongated instead of it being a square. It doesn't seem like there's as many out there, but they're
have some of the larger meetings that take place here, whether it be a council meeting or some other meeting that takes place at City Hall. We've talked about eventually, at some point in time, if the council entertained it and we wanted to lease out some space as well, that there would be additional parking needs for the building also. Cost estimate, one point two-five million. Again, this is just an estimate, and I want you to hear that word, because we are working on the numbers now, and we should be getting some final numbers back this week, I'm assuming, by the end of the week probably. So before we get to the next council meeting, we should have you some accurate numbers on there. Just so that you know, about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand of that is just for streetscape. That's what we're estimating that we'd spend on that. Building renovation would have some asbestos abatement that would have to occur, the ramps and ADA I talked about, the ventilation system. All those windows that you see would be converted into vents. We have to have that for, obviously, for exhaust fumes and things like that. And then, so a little bit of roof drain work. The roof is in very good shape, by the way. Jerry was giving me a report on that just yesterday. And then we have storm drain removal. There's an abandoned storm drain that we would have to get rid of that runs along the sidewalk over there, where whether we turn that into a parking lot or we turn it into a parking garage, it's going to have to be removed no matter what. And then we have gate arms that would have to be installed for security purposes to be able to have badge access to that. And there's the security and badge access. So that was the total cost of one point two-five million. This is an item that, of course, council asked us to bring back at the last meeting, and we just wanted to kind of give you the numbers and let you know how that, what we're looking at doing there. This was taken out of the project whenever we were looking at the overall scope and budget of the project of thirty-five million and realized that we were not going to be able to do this, so it was pulled and taken back out of the original project for City Hall. Then we also have streetscape that was on there as well, and then I can answer any questions if you should have them.
How many employees do we have here at City Hall? I mean, I know this is a guess, but how many are parking? How many cars?
Yeah, it's one-hundred-and-seventy-five.
One-hundred-and-seventy-five vehicles each day?
One-hundred-and-seventy-five employees. So depends, and generally, everybody drives their own vehicle, so. Andrew tried to give me a ride one time, but I denied it.
Good call.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did that. How many, how many spaces do we have out front now?
Jerry, you're going to have to...
Yeah, I'm looking at Jerry.
I can tell you this, we did the math, we counted these over and over and over and over again, and we had approximately the same amount of parking spaces that we had in just the east side of the old City Hall. It's just elongated instead of it being a square. It doesn't seem like there's as many out there, but there are. Now, there's also some parking that the Parks Department has for their building as well that is in the same parking lot as ours, but it's reserved for that Parks Department. So there's a few numbers that would come off of that total from there, but roughly the same amount. But we've noticed too that we, well, let me just say this, when we first set out the parking plan here, we made sure that we had the center parking spots and the closest parking spots to the building, that those would be reserved for customers. We've told staff, don't park in those parking areas. If you have to park across the street or find somewhere else, do that. Well, after we put that messaging out, you can see every day that we do have a lot of vehicles that are parked across the street, and that's just on a normal day, so.
Okay, okay. Thank you. So, try to help me figure out, how is, I mean, is there any way to document, how do we know we have a parking shortage right now?
We can do that. We've just basically been doing it off observation at this point in time, just noticing that, like even, you know, and I realize the grand opening was a large event, but there was not any place to park even across the street for that event, and we had to park all the way down the way at the Civic Center. In the old building, we also had parking shortages there, so that was the other thing that we're gauging it off of, where a lot of us were having to park down the north side of the Civic Center to be able to have access to the building. There were some days where even those spots were not available as well.
I don't know. I think what I'd like to see is maybe a map of this whole footprint in the area as to where the parking is, the number of spaces, and anything that can say, wow, I mean, we just have an overwhelming need to
Sure.
Have a parking garage for a million and a little bit.
We can do that. If there's another presentation that we would give you, that would give you the final numbers for it as well, we could bring those numbers back to you. That would be real easy to do.
Yeah, because I think to kind of justify the cost expenses, I mean, unless something's changed, parking is still the number-one land use in downtown. I mean, there's plenty of parking spaces. It's not always right by the building that you want to be at.
Right.
And so there is plenty of parking in this general area. I mean, sometimes people may have to walk a little bit, but I guess for me, I just, you know, if we can take a footprint on how many parking spaces we have, and how often is it that we would need these additional parking spaces? I mean, is it a daily? I mean, do we think there'd be a need for it? So I'm just kind of looking for, show me where the shortage is and why there would be a demand for this, and, you know, I guess kind of be worth the million and change in investment.
Yes, sir. We can bring that back to you for sure.
We could probably go a step further and get some of our drones and do some like midday snapshots regularly to kind of see the progression, so we can get real footage of the parking usage.
One other thing, because we've got to consider what's possibly going to happen across, I guess I'm pointing the right direction. What's going to happen to that other parking, right? I mean, we've got to consider that, because some are parking there whenever it's full.
Correct. Yeah, and we would, you know, if we demo City Hall at some point in time, which that's the plan, we would still keep the parking that is in the front of City Hall and on this side, on the east side. That would still remain there either for Civic Center parking. You know, we think about the Ranch Rodeo when it comes, there's nowhere to park within two blocks from here. So we've also got some businesses that we're considering that are on the other side of the building from us, where some of our employees have been parking as on-street parking, which is okay, except for some of it's blocking their businesses on the other side when we park there. So we're just trying to be good neighbors to them as well.
Okay. So, Mr. Hooper, my concern would be budget. If we run those numbers, that's roughly twenty thousand dollars per spot. And I know that's got two-hundred-and-fifty for, you know, landscape, so I would think if we were willing to phase into it, so maybe you pull the streetscape out, and then if we could value-engineer it, there may not be much there because of the complexity of that retrofit. But if we just took the parking spots in front of the existing warehouse, and then would we do diagonal over on this side next to our old loading dock as well?
If we kept it as it is now?
Yeah, let's just say we wanted to find twenty parking spots. Can we find twenty right over here between the two buildings that we're, you know, we're not utilizing right now per striping,
Sure.
But we may be parking there.
Yeah, we have a temporary plan for that as well, but we put that on hold until we figured out which direction council wanted us to go on the garage. So what we can do is bring that back as part of that presentation as well, and show you what it'd look like if we kept it as is, and how many parking stalls we could have in the existing space.
Yeah, I think if we look at it, if you're only gaining sixty parking spots for one point two million, I mean, that's a lot per spot for what you're trying to get to. And then, you know, if you can show us, are there twenty that are between the two buildings? If we retrofitted a little bit of just the parking area and how traffic flows, and we keep that building for future or just warehouse, that would be something I'd be interested in looking at. I think that one point two million has votability for the council if we were satisfied elsewhere in our budget. But I think with the budget constraints that we're going to have to pushing money around to other places, I think the parking need is going to be lesser than some of the other identified needs. So I would hope we would have maybe either, you know, if we can show what we can maximize without spending any money or very little money over there versus showing this as a, you know, an expenditure that's going to help us.
Just to clarify, what I'm hearing is that y'all would like to have one more expanded presentation that has more data attached to it. I think that's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, I think so. I think if we took some drone footage and showed like how much we're using,
Sure.
Just a few snapshots, that'll tell us, you know, when are we full capacity, how many parking spots current, you know, within good walking distance, how many additional we could add if, say, you did diagonal parking up next to our new building, and then also just regular pull-in parking over like we've been doing. There's just, it's not striped. That'll help us make a good decision on kind of what the ROI is, I would say, on that, you know, one plus two million dollars.
We can do it.
Well, we could also bring back some funding options, because we do have some dollars from the City Hall project from interest earnings dedicated to City Hall that could cover it if council wanted to proceed that way. So we'll bring that back too.
Yeah, I would say if we're identifying something that was, you know, bond-related, and it's going to be restricted to this building, that would be something we'd like to know.
Excellent. We'll do that.
Yeah. I think one other thing, while, I mean, just while we're looking at this, and it's kind of a little bit more difficult to do, because you're thinking about not what is, but what could be, but just not forgetting to think about longer term. I mean, you know, and what could happen in other areas of downtown, or is that the highest and best use of parking right now? But what could we, I mean, I just think it's good to look at the entire footprint of downtown. In other words, we may come to a place ten years from now, we said, man, why in the world did we make that into parking? We don't need parking there. We really need parking somewhere else. So I think it's just something to look at. It may not change anything on this. And then my other question is, are governmental entities eligible for tiers funding, or is that only for business?
Technically, yes. It has been used for government. It's been used for Potter County streetscape, and it was also used for Amarillo College streetscape. So it has historically been used for both.
So that could be somewhere if we're, of course, using that money.
Particularly the two-hundred-and-fifty thousand streetscape would be an easy one to qualify.
Okay, thank you. Anything further, Mr. Hooper?
No, sir. I think we have our instructions.
We'll look for that back. Thank you, guys. Appreciate that. So moving us, council, do we have any future agenda items requested? No? Okay. All right. We're going to move over to our consent agenda, section eight. Do I have anything that council had a question, needed discussion, or that we need to pull off?
No, sir.
Okay, would request a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Motion and a second on all items consent. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes with a four-oh vote. Turning a few pages here to number nine A. We have Mr. Hendrick here, or Kendrick, coming up here to do a public meeting, public hearing.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Ordinance eighty-one, eighty-one eighty-four is a public hearing in consideration for the rezoning of a one-point-one-six acre tract of land out of block forty-six of Rich Quest Unit Number Twelve, located in Randall County, Texas, plus one half of all bounding streets, alleys, and public ways. The change from Residential District One to Plan Development District four-oh-eight for single-family detached homes with increased maximum lot coverage and a reduced minimum lot width, area, and front yard setback in the vicinity of Holiday Drive and Fulton Drive. And the applicant is OJD Engineering LLC for Mike Standifer. And the applicant is proposing to change the zoning to develop this property with nine single-family detached homes in an alley, and eight of those homes will be zero lot line garden homes. And the request would conform with City Plan twenty forty-five and the place type of neighborhood low identified for the property. And currently, the applicant's property is Residential District One, which would allow for single-family detached homes. The applicant's proposed plan development would feature the following differences from Residential District One, however. Increased lot coverage, sixty percent versus forty-five. Reduced minimum lot width, thirty-seven feet versus sixty feet. Reduced minimum lot area, four-four-hundred square feet versus seventy-five-hundred square feet. And reduced minimum front yard setback, fifteen feet versus twenty-five feet. And the Planning and Zoning Commission did note that the proposed lots would be an increase in density when compared to the prevailing development pattern in this area, which is approximately four dwelling units per acre. However, this location along Fulton Drive is located directly across the street from five duplexes, ten, that are a total of ten dwelling units, and those come out to a unit density of eight-point-three units per acre, and those were constructed in the nineteen-seventies. Next slide, please. And that is the proposed site plan for the garden homes, most of them front along Fulton and one along Harmony. And on this slide here, the property in red is the applicant's property, and the property in yellow are those just-mentioned duplexes that the property is located directly across the street from. The applicant's proposed density is seven-point-eight units per acre, and the City Plan place type for the category, which is that neighborhood low category, has a recommended density of one to nine units per acre. So the applicant's proposed density would fit within that range that's called for. Additionally, City Plan also calls for encouraging appropriate infill projects and establishing a greater diversity of housing options, both in established and developing neighborhoods. So this proposal would accomplish those two goals as well. And in examining the request, the Planning and Zoning Commission is of the opinion that this is an appropriate infill project when considering the development patterns in this area that the applicant's property is located next to, and it would also maintain the predominant single-family nature of this area. We did send twenty-six public notices as required by state law, and we did receive one comment in opposition to the request. The primary concerns that were expressed were the density of the proposed development, increases in traffic if approved, and parking issues, and concerns about increased flooding if additional development is allowed in this area. And just to show you a very similar plan development here in town to give you a visual of what this could potentially look like, this is a plan development over in Sleepy Hollow that features virtually identical lot sizes and also development standards. The one exception is the lot coverage on this development was fifty percent, and the applicant's proposing sixty percent, but this is largely a very similar example of what the developer has planned, and that's what it would visually look like from the street potentially regarding the size of home and the type of lot that these would be on. And these also feature a fifteen-foot setback as well, just as the applicant's proposing. Given all that, the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval with a seven-oh vote at their March third meeting on this request.
Very well. Any questions for Brady?
No, sir.
What's the current use, Brady? What is it right now?
So this property was owned by the Amarillo Deaf Church, and it was just a vacant portion of their lot that the developer bought from them. And they also did demolish a portion of their building as well, so it's currently undeveloped at this point.
Okay, great. Thank you.
No problem.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. At this time, we'll open a public hearing. Do I have anyone here today who'd like to speak for or against this item? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close our public hearing. Would request a motion by council.
Make a motion to approve ordinance number eight-one-eight-four as presented.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We appreciate the hard work and the future housing over there. That's a good deal, so thank y'all. Moving us to item nine B. Let me see who we have on this one. Shows Mrs. Coggins, a TABC issue possibly.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We are back today with an alcohol-related variance request from the Big Texan RV Ranch. So in your packets, you've got some information, and we're going to go through this on the screen as well. The Big Texan RV Ranch is a, they operate as an RV park. They have cabins as well, and they are seeking to add the sale of alcoholic beverages, beer and wine, on their premises. It would be off-premise sales from a, in essence, like a gift shop they have there, and they are seeking this in hopes of adding options and opportunity for their guests to have convenient options to buy beer and wine without having to detach their towed vehicles from their RVs and traveling off-site. The applicant is operating, as we talked, as an RV and cabin campground. They're located at fourteen fourteen Sunrise Drive. They applied for a license to sell beer and wine off-premise, and ultimately, they were denied an alcohol business license on February twenty-six, twenty-twenty-five, because they are within a three-hundred-foot setback of Sunrise Elementary. They, as a reminder, schools are measured as the crow flies, so property line to property line, from the Big Texan RV Ranch to Sunrise Elementary, they're approximately one-hundred-and-ninety-three feet away. So the Big Texan RV Ranch is located in an area zoned light commercial, and that zoning does allow for all types of alcohol sales. The surrounding area has no legal alcohol business license within that three-hundred-foot setback. One thing to note on this, and something that they included in their request to us, which was included in your agenda packet, is Sunrise Elementary is one of the schools that AISD will be closing after twenty-twenty-five. And so we did reach out to AISD, and they wrote us back and said they would not oppose this variance. As far as some of the reasoning that the applicant gave, and we worked with Chris Gant, who's one of the co-owners of this RV park, he was not able to be here today, but in the letter that's in your packet, he did share some reasoning. Number one, the closure of the AISD school, limited and controlled sales. Their intention is to sell a very limited quantity of beer and wine exclusively to registered guests of the Big Texan RV Ranch. So their onsite store primarily serves their residents and not the general public. And then they acknowledge the small portion of their property, which we'll look at on the map here in a moment, that falls within that three-hundred-foot setback, is actually fenced off and not being used at the moment. So one thing to remember when we talk about a variance request, so our code does not allow it within three-hundred foot of a school or a church. You, as council, can allow a variance to that for several different reasons, which are on the screen here. So if you find that the cell of, that, let me say, if you find that denying them the ability for their proposed alcohol sales would hit one of these considerations, then you may want to consider approving a variance today. If you approve a variance today, once we approve it for that property, it is grandfathered in for life. And so that's what you have to remember. And it could open up as any other type of alcohol sales as well. It could transfer to a bar, it could transfer to a restaurant. Any sort of alcohol sales would be wet at that location after that. Here's a map in front of you. So what you'll see there, the Big Texan RV Ranch and Sunrise Elementary, the school is highlighted in red, and the applicant is highlighted in green, and it's that northwestern corner of their RV ranch that falls within that two-hundred-foot setback. So there are no other alcohol licenses within the setback, but I've got a few other that are notated with red circles there that are in that vicinity. So, any questions?
The actual location of the, I guess, store
Mm-hmm.
Is nowhere near three-hundred feet, correct?
And that is correct. So the way that it was explained to me, I believe it is in the southeastern part, so it's almost completely across from where that setback falls.
But we measure from property line to property line.
We do. And if any piece of the property falls within that setback, then technically, it's something we would have to deny.
Okay.
Are there any other questions I can answer for you on this one?
And so, so technically, I mean, they could apply for this, I guess, whenever the last day of the school closes, or if it's still zoned for a school, does it?
I think technically, once it's still owned by a school.
As long as the property is at AISD's name, they would not be able to.
Whether it's used or not.
And I talked through that with the applicant. We talked through that a little bit and chatted. And in the interest of time, they wanted to seek a variance so that they could do something because we don't know what AISD's plans would be with that property.
Anything further? Okay, Mrs. Coggins, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we will open a public hearing, correct?
This one is not a public hearing.
It's not a public hearing, even though it's a variance.
Correct. But I will remind you when you make a motion, and let me put these back on the screen. We would need you to identify which of these that you would want to make that motion with.
Counsel, any further discussion on this one?
No, sir.
Would request a motion.
I move to adopt ordinance number 8185, allowing a variance. If enforcement of setback will not be effective or necessary.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes with a 4-0 vote. Item 9C. Mrs. Stores, are you up on this one?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So this item is one of the final steps that we take in order to kind of close out our prior fiscal year. So please note that this is related to fiscal year 2023, 2024. And these are budget amendments that we're bringing forward for the legally adopted budgets by the City of Amarillo that we will present in our audited financial statements that we will be presenting to you all at the next city council meeting in order for you to consider accepting it. So this is ordinance number 8186. And I do want to mention that the ordinance that was posted with the agenda has a mistake in it that I have corrected. And I'm not sure if y'all got a copy of the updated ordinance or not at your places, but we will make sure that it is included for the second reading at the next council meeting. And I'll go over that in just a second. So we have a handful of recommended budget amendments, and I'll just go over these one by one. Y'all, please stop me if you have a question about any of these. We have a requested amendment of 240,000 to our local seized property fund. And this, those funds were used to purchase a vehicle and some various other items that are needed by our police department. This is purchased from sufficient funds inside there. It's hard for us to estimate how much seized property we'll get on an annual basis. And so if more comes in than anticipated, then a lot of times we, the department, the police department will go ahead and purchase needed items. So we're looking at a $240,000 amendment, again, within the funds contained in the seized property fund. Our next one is our compensated absences fund. This is the fund that we pay out our terminated sick leave, annual leave, and comp time when anyone separates services from the City of Amarillo, other than police, I'm sorry, other than water and sewer, airport, and drainage. We paid out a little bit more than anticipated this year by $450,000. And we have covered that in what was available from our general fund. And that is our common practice in that area. We budget about 1.25 million each year, but it just depends based on how many separations we have during the year, and especially if any of those are more tenured employees. Sometimes those payouts come out a little bit higher. The next one is our court technology. I'm going to talk about court technology and court security funds. Those are both state mandated fees that we collect through our municipal court area. Actually, these are both a positive thing. We're wanting to reduce the amount that we needed from the general fund in court technology by 15,000. So we needed less. So we collected a little bit more in fees than anticipated. And then in our court security fund, 40,000, we needed a little bit less as well. Court technology fund helps pay for some of the municipal court software, and court security fund pays for most of the bailiffs' costs over at our municipal court. The next several are public improvement districts. Please note that these are funded through the assessments of those neighborhood public improvement districts. No city funding goes into these particular funds, but they are legally adopted budgets. So we have to adjust as we move forward throughout the year. So the first one is Heritage Hills Pid. And I believe in your ordinance, it had been listed at a $240,000, I'm sorry, a $260,000 amendment. We had a late entry that came through, and that's actually going to be 295,000. They paid out a little bit more in park amenities that the developer put in. And it's all within the reserves that they have in that public improvement district. The other one we have listed in your ordinance that is no longer there is your Colonies Pid. They do not need a budget amendment. So that is going to be a change on next, I'm sorry, on the next council meeting's final ordinance for budget amendments. The next one listed here is Point West Public Improvement District. And there's a $35,000 budget amendment needed. And again, there was a little bit more paid out for park amenities and some irrigation than what was originally budgeted, all within their reserves. Vineyards has a small amount of 5,000. They paid a little bit more for temporary labor and some assessment collection by Potter County, and it's all within their excess reserves. The last Pid is Pinnacle, Pid of 50,000. They paid out just a little bit more in temporary labor than was budgeted, but all within their excess reserves available. And the last one here is our bonded debt service fund. This is where we paid out our property tax and other, I'm sorry, our property tax, our hotel occupancy tax, and then all of our Pid-supported debt. On this one, we paid out a little bit more in debt service than we budgeted, which seems weird because we know how much we're going to pay out each year. And the reason for that was because actually the debt that is associated with City Hall is being paid half by property taxes and half by our water and sewer revenues. And it was all in the way we budgeted it. So we actually, in the budget, put it in as the debt service being paid half out of this area, half out of water and sewer. The way we actually paid it, it all came out of this debt service fund, bonded debt service fund, and water and sewer just reimbursed this fund. So it's just kind of in the way that we had accounted for, but we need to go ahead and do a budget amendment. It's all within the funding that was available inside that fund. So with that, I know this is a lot. This is really just cleanup. As we got all the final audit adjustments in for the year, as I mentioned, we'll be going over an audit with our audit committee a little bit more detail about our audited financials, I believe, later, next week. And then next council meeting, we'll be bringing the audited financials. As mentioned, this is just first reading of this, and then the second and final will be on the next council meeting. What can I answer for you all?
Just on the Pids, do they know about these budget amendments?
Yes, we have sent this out to all of the Pid boards to let them wear. Actually, that was great. That's how we determined there was an entry that was incorrect between the Heritage Hills Pid and Colonies Pid because they did some review of it. We're asking more questions, and we were able to get that fixed before we brought it to you all. Yes, sir.
Question? No. Question? Mrs. Stores, so on the 540?
Yes.
So that's all for City Hall debt service?
Yes, that's associated with the City Hall debt service. We went, yes. And actually, the debt service on City Hall is higher than that, but this is for the portion that water and sewer was paying associated with that.
For example, let's say we paid out $1 million. We received revenues 540,000 from sewer and water because they're housed here.
That's correct.
So they can afford to pay for that debt service, their portion?
Yes.
So when we're making a budget amendment like this, how was it represented? Because this is the 2324 budget?
Yes, sir.
How was it represented in our last 2425 budget?
So in the 2425 budget, I would have to go back and double-check, but I think we put it all in this fund and showed a transfer coming in from our water and sewer fund, wherein this year, we showed essentially two separate debts, and that's not accurate. Because all the debt, it's just one debt issuance and one debt service payment. And so we're making one payment, and then the other fund is reimbursing this fund for it.
Would that have been shown in a, like, an interdepartmental?
Transfer?
Inter-fund transfer?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
So you would have shown a fund transfer from water and sewer into general fund?
Into this bonded debt service fund. Yes, sir. You're correct.
And you're amending the old budget to reconcile that revenue source?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay.
And to show that we paid all the debt service out of this place and not in the two separate funds. So we have revenue coming in to offset it, and then they made the full debt service payment out of this bonded debt service fund instead of a piece out of that and a piece out of water and sewer.
Okay. And so squares up?
Yes, sir.
At the end?
Yes, sir.
But then, in just the documentation, notice it here, public meeting, go back and show it?
Yes.
All right. And then current budget includes all funding coming from general fund?
I believe so. I'll have to double-check on that, and I can confirm back with you all.
If you would, because I'm lost in where that would, that would still be an interdepartmental fund transfer, right?
Yes, sir. Yes. So what would happen is if it's all budgeted in this fund, it would show the larger debt service expense, and it would show a revenue source, a transfer in from water and sewer. And on the water and sewer side, it would show a transfer out instead of a debt service payment.
Okay, I'll follow you there. I guess I was just reading the parentheses showing that, you know, it was covered because we had excess reserves.
Yes.
But technically, it's covered because you have revenues.
Yes, coming in from the water and sewer fund. Yes, sir, absolutely. That's probably a better way to put it. And I can update that on the memo to make it a little more clear for the next reading at the next council meeting.
I think so. Just the level of scrutiny that we operate under, especially when you have transfers like that. I think it would be good to show that you revenueed money from water and sewer that paid for that debt service out of the general fund. And then on the current year's budget, however you want to update that, you know, in the audit?
Sure.
Committee meeting would be great with me.
Okay.
Okay.
On the budget piece, so on the, I don't have the budget in front of me, but when we're looking at the budget. Because it's revenue bonds through water and sewer, right?
Are you asking about this particular debt issuance?
The revenue bond came from water and sewer for City Hall. So there were two bonds, correct?
No, there was just one debt issuance. It was a tax note. And with a property tax pledge and a limited pledge from water and sewer. And the way we have funded it is half has come out of property taxes and half has come out of water and sewer. And again, as just a point of note, that debt issuance will be paid off, I believe it's in 2029. So we have a couple more years of this, and then that one actually will go away. It's a little bit complicated because we have two funds paying for it, but it's truly just one debt issuance.
Okay.
Yes.
Any further questions? Okay, Mrs. Stores, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item 9C, council?
I move to adopt ordinance number 8186.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. That concludes all of our business dealings here today. We appreciate everyone for coming in and attending the meeting. Counsel with a motion to adjourn will get out of here.
I move to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second. You're adjourned. Thank you, guys.